The recording. We're recording, we're recording.
Okay. I'm just moving a window around here. Good evening. My name is Randolph Michael John. I'm a member of the zoning board of appeals of the town of Brookline and the chair of this evening's meeting. Before we begin, I will confirm that all members and other persons anticipated to participate on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Wadner Oje?
Here.
Jesse Geller?
Here.
Thank you. And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Nicole Paray?
Here.
This meeting of the ZBA, an open session, is being conducted remotely and in a manner that is consistent with Governor Helius' March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three bill, which extends to March thirty first, twenty twenty five, the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law that were originally put in place by Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty executive order concerning the outbreak of COVID nineteen. The governor's bill authorizes this body to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate public access is provided. Adequate public access does not include part, public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the ZBA is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's calendar, which identifies how the public may access the meeting. Be advised that this meeting is being held and some attendees may be participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town website through a link in the agenda. The meeting will follow the agenda unless I know it otherwise. Next, I will cover some ground rules that will permit clear and effective conduct of our business and help to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each member by name to provide any comment, questions, comment. Any comment, question or motions, please hold yours until your name is called. Please also remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Before responding, please wait until the floor is yielded to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through me. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Finally, I'll explain how members of the public may speak in this meeting. If you wish to speak, and this is a recent change, you may, you may raise your hand using the Zoom raise your hand feature, or you may contact our host Nicole Paray using the chat section of the Zoom. Nicole and I will collaborate to try to call on members of the public in the order in which they raise their hands. When it is your turn to speak, I will call on you by name only. Please begin your remarks by stating your name and address. Now to the agenda. Our first case this evening is number two zero two four dash zero 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 five four. This concerns property at four Fisher Avenue, where the project is to construct three dormers at an existing single family dwelling. Who is here as the applicant or on behalf of the applicant?
I am.
Give us your name actually for the record.
Ashley Duval, I'm a planner at Arlo three hundred Washington Street. I just wanted to note that six dork terrorists were actually going to request to continue that. I'm not sure if there's anyone from the public here on for that case, so if it's okay with you, I just wanted to note that.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for the heads up, Ashley. And will you waive a reading of the public notice on Fisher Ave?
I will.
Thank you. Please tell the board about the request for relief.
Sure. Great. Thank you. So on with me tonight are the homeowners Raj Dundage and Ash Nedkarni. And our project architect, I believe, is on with them by speakerphone. His name's Greg Bogosian. And we're navigating technology tonight, so hopefully you can hear him and he can answer your questions. Just a little background on the property, Raj and Ash.
Actually, should we just pause to make sure? I don't see him, so should we make sure we can hear him? Is he supposed to be connected now?
He's on speakerphone. There he is.
Oh, I see. Yes, that's, that's okay. All right.
Yeah, I'm prepared to share the plans and we got through it at planning board, so I'm optimistic we can make it work tonight as well.
Okay, thank you. I just, it helps, it helps to know how it's, how it's working. Go ahead, Ashley.
Um, so four Fisher Avenue is located in the S fifteen single family zoning district. The existing lot is just under eighteen thousand square feet where there's a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet required in this district. The neighborhood is mostly single family homes. This property is a little bit unique because it has two front yards. It has a front yard on Fisher Avenue, which is where the side of the house faces, and the other front yard faces Boylston Street Route nine and that, so the Route nine side is where we're proposing to add three dormers. And the photos that we provided show that there's a really dense landscape screening between the property and Boylston Street. I'm happy to pull that up as well if the board would like me to. And the project is here before you tonight because the dormers increase the gross floor area by about two hundred and eight square feet. The existing FAR is zero point four three. This district allows a maximum FAR of point two five, so it's already over what's allowed. The proposed increase to the FAR is point zero one for a total FAR of point four four. And the front yard setback on Fisher Avenue, which I mentioned is really the side of the house, is also preexisting nonconforming at eighteen point nine two feet. This district requires a setback of twenty five feet. The dormers, the one closest to Fisher, don't go further into the setback, and they, they actually comply with the twenty five. I think they're setback about thirty three feet. So this increase requires a finding of no substantial detriment and no new conformity under forty eight, section six. The planning board reviewed this at their meeting on December nineteenth and spent about five minutes total reviewing it. And we're, we're unanimously supportive. Through this process, we've had no opposition and we feel that that speaks to the lack of detriment that would be caused as a result of this proposal. So with that, I'll pause and just see if the board would like a presentation of the architectural drawings. I understand you've gotten them ahead of this meeting, or if there are any questions for the architect.
Yeah, we, we, thank you, Ashley. We, we have, let me just give you one question, then I'll turn to the board members. The, the additional, is it the case that the additional floor area is, appears because the, the dormers make it possible to, to occupy what's now knee wall space on the top floor of the, the structure?
Exactly. So my understanding is that the, you count the existing attic space up until the knee wall. Though by adding these dormers, that space then becomes gross floor area.
And there's three of them.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Board members, what do you think? Do we need to see the drawings in, in the haring?
Ask by name, Randall.
I, I was sorry. Yes, Jesse?
No, I do not.
Jesse does not. How about you, Wadner?
I do not.
Okay. Um, so I thank you, Ashley, but I think we'll, we'll, we'll carry on. And without the design presentation, any, Jesse, any questions about the, the presentation so far?
Ashley, any new nonconformity?
No, I'm happy to get into the, the zoning relief portion if the board's ready for that.
We probably, but let me just check with Wadner. Wadner, how about you? Any questions at this point?
No, I don't.
Okay, thanks. Ashley, go ahead and tell us about the zoning.
Thank you. So as I noted, this is a request to increase the preexisting nonconforming FAR from point four three to a point four four and to modify a preexisting nonconforming front yard setback, even though the new dormers don't exacerbate that. No new nonconformity will be created as a result of this proposal. The board has used section nine point zero five, the special permit standards, to review detriment to the neighborhood on previous section six requests. I'll just say that the specific site is an appropriate location for the dormers. It's a residential use and the dormers will maintain this use. The use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no change to the use and the proposed dormers face busy Route nine and are screened by mature Cypress tree plantings. But we don't anticipate any impact to privacy, privacy shadows, impacts, view sheds, the sort of thing. And there's also been no opposition and the planning board was unanimously and swiftly supportive. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. There's no change whatsoever to the circulation on the site to parking or anything. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and proposed use, and the development will not have any effect on the supply of housing available for low and moderate income people. So we believe that this proposal meets the standards under Master and Law forty eight, section six, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thanks. I, I don't have any other questions. And for Jesse, any others?
None.
Wadner? Okay. Nicole, do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak in favor of the project?
No, we do not.
Or in opposition?
No, we do not.
Okay, then please give us the report of the planning department and the planning board.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Nicole Paray, zoning coordinator for the town of Brookline. A planning staff finds the proposal, the proposed addition to be modest in scale and finds that it does not alter the existing footprint of the house. Additionally, the dormers will be effectively screened by the large Cypress tree trees along the fence, fencing Boylston Street. Therefore, resulting in increase in FAR unlikely to have a significant detriment to the neighborhood. The planning board was, has no opposition to the proposal and believes the relief being sought is minimal and unlikely to be a detriment to the neighborhood. Therefore, the planning board recommended approval of the site plan by Kenneth B. Anderson, PLS dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty two, and the architectural plans by Gregory K. Borzian, R.A., dated October first, twenty twenty four, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit the final floor plans and elevations stamped and signed by registered architect. And the final site plan stamped and signed by registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. And two, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval of site plan, floor plan and elevations displaying the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning in evidence the board of appeals decision was obtained from the town clerk by the applicant or representative and recorded at the registry of deeds.
Uh, members, any questions about that? Jesse?
None.
Wadner?
No questions.
All right. Paul Campbell, nice to see you. Would you please give us the building department report?
Yes, I'm Paul Campbell from deputy commissioner from the building department. The building department has no objection to the request to relieve. Should the board grant the request to relieve, the building department will work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw. This board's decision and all applicable codes.
Thanks, Paul. We haven't had a lot of questions in the process so far from members and unless I see some hands go up now, I'm going to say we'll just uh, go into deliberation. All right, let's do that. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll start. Um, just, uh, as Ashley told us, this is requesting relief. It's available under section six. The where, and I'm just gonna reread the, the finding that we have to make. The such an extension alteration shall be permitted, I'm paraphrasing, with a finding by the permit granting authority or the special permit granting authority that such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. This is actually fairly close to where I live. I go by this block all the time. But one of the things that I noted about it, and I confirmed this in a satellite view, the, there's quite a bit of uniformity of, of, of buildings on the lot size is very little bit, but building is not so much, and they are, almost all of them have dormers on both sides as this property is now proposing to add. In that sense, uh, and, and considering that the uh, the, no new conform, new, new nonconformities being created, these, the dormers are, are within the footprint of the existing house. In my opinion, that this, it would not be, have such significant detrimental, detrimental impact, and I would be in support of the grant of relief as requested. Uh, Wadner?
Um, I do agree with you, um, Randolph. Basically, even though if the dormer there were to, to be ensuring on Boylston Street, they will be consistent to the, to, to the neighborhood, the street, as you go further down, going toward Chestnut Hill have, it's, it's consistent. Yeah, all the houses on Boylston Street facing Boylston Street, they do have dormers. Um, I believe it's a modest request in, I'm in favor. Yeah, can meet the requirement of five foot nine. Um, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Wadner. Jesse?
So I agree with what my colleagues have said. So I think it meets the requirements under forty A, section six, as interpreted by case law. As we interpret it through section nine point oh five for the reasons cited. So I'm in favor. And I find no substantial detriment.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, members. Uh, there's a decision, unanimous approval subject to the conditions that have been read into the record.
Thank you all.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, we should leave now.
All right. Our next case, number twenty twenty four dash zero 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 five six. This concerns property at forty eight dash fifty Cameron Street, where the project is to construct a rear addition over an existing second floor bedroom to create office space. Who is here as the applicant or on behalf of the applicant?
I am.
Uh, Ashley, just give us your name again on the tape.
Sure. So my name is Ashley Duval and I'm a planner at Arlo at three hundred Washington Street in Brookline Village, and I would waive a reading of the published notice.
Very good. Thank you. And please tell the board about the request for relief and introduce anybody that you need to.
Sure. Thank you. So on with me tonight are the homeowners, Joe and Elizabeth Hewitt. They're on my bottom left corner. And then we also have our project architect, Alan Christ. Um, Joe and Elizabeth have lived at forty eight Cameron Street for about eleven years now, and they share the home with their two sons, thirteen and eleven, who go to the Lincoln School, which is about half a mile away. So they really like their house where they're at now. They just wanted to create a little bit more breathing room as the boys get older and worked with Alan to come up with a modest addition that really kind of infills where there's an existing deck at the rear of the home. This addition creates a functional office extension off the primary bedroom and kind of away from the main activity of the household. Uh, the existing building is a two-family in the M one point O zoning district, and it has a lot size of at just over two thousand square feet, which is less than half the required lot size of five thousand square feet. So it's a quite small lot. Uh, the surrounding neighborhood is a really eclectic mix of two families and larger multifamily buildings, and they're all kind of sighted really close to the sidewalk. I don't know if you are familiar with the neighborhood. Um, the most impacted about her, in my opinion, to this project is to the rear, and that's the MBTA because the tracks run along the rear of the property. Um, this addition increases the preexisting nonconforming gross floor area by about one hundred and eighty eight square feet, bringing the FAR from one point seven four to one point eight three, an increase of point zero nine, where there's a maximum allowed FAR of one point O. So they're already over and their quest is to go slightly more over. The side and the rear setbacks, as well as the usable open space, are also preexisting nonconforming. The bylaw requires a side yard setback of ten feet. The existing is as narrow as about one point six feet. The addition is setback about two point eight feet. The rear setback thirty feet are required, and the survey shows the existing and proposed rear yard as fourteen point one, so just about half of the requirement. And the property, because of how narrow the lot is, has zero usable open space, and there will be, there will continue to be no usable open space. I'll also just note that the lot with minimum and the front yard setbacks are also preexisting nonconforming, but there are no changes or alterations to those nonconformities, but I'm just noting them for the record. And the board should have received a letters of support for the project from the resident of the other unit. This is a two-family. And Joe and Elizabeth have spoken with the neighbors, some of whom reached out because they were curious about the lawn sign posted. Again, all the buildings are kind of really close, so the lawn sign's really obvious. Um, and there's been no opposition throughout this process, and the proposal received the unanimous support from the planning board. And we do have the architect on who's prepared to, to present the drawings to you if you'd like him to do so, or I'm happy to go into the zoning relief.
Um, thanks. May, maybe just a couple of informational questions first. And I'll ask the members as well. Ashley, could you just clarify about the, 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 how the property is set up? This is submitted as forty eight dash fifty. It, it looks like forty eight is a dwelling and fifty is a dwelling, but are they, are they, how are they combined or how are they bound to each other as a property?
Sure. So it's, it's, the building's been condoized, so it's two units.
Okay.
But it's a two-family use under the zoning.
Right. Secondly, I noticed when you were talking about the existing setbacks, you mentioned, and I can see this one on the drawing, the one point six foot, you know, engineering dimension on the plot plan, which is on the number fifty side, the, the planning board report talks about a one foot, one inch existing and proposed side yard setback, which I can't find on the drawing. I mean, it's just, it's just inches here, but do you, do you know where, where, which dimension is?
I, that's a good question for Alan. It could be.
Okay, we can hold it then until we look at a drawing. You know what? Let me, do you mind? Let me check with board members. Jesse, any questions so far?
None.
Wadner?
Uh, I, I do not have any questions.
Ashley, why don't you finish talking about the zoning and then let's talk to Alan and maybe see some drawings.
Sure. So the proposal requires a finding under forty A, section six, as interpreted by case law, uh, to increase the preexisting nonconforming FAR, which impacts the preexisting nonconforming usable open space and the rear and side yard setbacks, as I noted above. The addition will not create any new nonconformity. This board has used section nine oh five, the special permit standards, to review detriment to the neighborhood. I'll just review those quickly. Um, this specific site is an appropriate location for such use. The property is located in a residential neighborhood and this addition will maintain that use. The use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no change to the use, and the proposed addition is really most impactful to the MBTA tracks that run to the rear. No neighbors have voiced any opposition to the proposal, and the planning board was unanimously supportive. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. There's no change to the site circulation here. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, and the development will not have any effect on the supply of housing available for low and moderate income people. Um, I'll just say this is a really tough site to do much with. It's only about forty percent of the minimum lot size required and is, is kind of narrow in both directions. Um, we think Alan's done a, a nice job coming up with this modest addition that will really improve the livability of the home for the family. Um, and as there's no new nonconformity and we don't feel there'll be any detriment, we believe we meet the standard as required under forty A, section six.
Okay, thanks. Why don't, if you could introduce the architect and then I'd, I'd like to see at least a site plan, and we could see other drawings if, if other members are interested.
Alan, can you pull up the, the site plan? I think the survey is probably the best one to look at.
Should I share my screen or how?
That would be great.
Oh, yeah. Disabled.
I just made you a co-host, so you can share.
Okay. Hmm. Okay, here is the site plan. Where you can.
Alan, sorry, could you just give us your name on the record, please?
I, yes, sorry about that. Uh, my name is Alan Christ, um, arc, the architect for the project with Alan Christ Architects LLC. And at two fifty one Harvard Street in Coolidge Corner.
And can you, can you walk us through these, the side yard setbacks, just to start with, Alan?
Yes. Uh, so the lot has a bit of an irregular shape and we're very tight to the setbacks here. This, I think, is the side setback that the planning board was referencing.
Got it. Okay.
Their parking spaces along here, this is paved, the lot is angular in this zone, so it allows space for the deck access there and back, which is fairly tight against the MBTA property at the northern end of the site. There's a shared party wall in between the two units, and then on the other side, the setback is more uniform and orthogonal. The addition in question is largely not visible from the street on the north side of the forty eight Cameron Street site. Uh, it's a hundred and eighty eight square feet. We are the, oh, as Ashley mentioned, open space is preexisting noncompliant, uh, usable open space because it's not meaning the fifteen foot requirement. Just to, the massing here, you can see we were trying to create a little cutout for the addition. This wall, because it's a party wall, windows are not allowed, but we are trying to do a change in texture, you know, the cladding on this upper level, so it reads as a little cutout in this zone. So there are a bit more windows there, and this allows them to have a really functional office space that's attached to their master bedroom on the third floor.
Great. Thanks, Alan. And those windows, they'll know when they need to run of the house to catch the, is the green line that runs behind there.
Exactly.
Yeah, to Alan, let me, let me just pause you there and see if there are specific questions from the members of the board to, and, and whether we need to see more drawings or have you answered questions? Wadner, anything from you?
You could take the screen down.
So the, the debt trying to put the office, is it exclusively belong to the unit owner? It's not a commons?
No, it's not common. It's just for forty eight Cameron Street.
Yeah.
All right. That's the only questions.
Okay. Thank you, Wadner. Jesse, any questions?
None.
Thank you. Uh, Alan, thank you. That's, that's probably enough. We did get all the drawings in the packet. Uh, unless, actually, there's anything else we need to see about design. It, it looks pretty complete so far.
No, I think, Alan, you can stop sharing your screen now. We don't have any additional drawings to provide.
Great. Um, as, as Ashley mentioned, we did, the board did receive a copy of a letter of support from Stephen Bishimer, sorry about the pronunciation, and Colleen White, next door at fifty Cameron. If there are other members of the public who would wish to comment on the project, uh, this is a good time to hear from them. Nicole, do we have anybody? Who's
No, we do not.
Present, uh, neither in favor nor opposed?
No, no one is.
All right, well then, Nicole, please give us the planning department and planning board reports.
Yes. Uh, staff finds the proposed addition to be modest in scale and it adheres to the footprint of the existing structure. Moreover, the property abuts train tracks to the rear and has generous setback. So it's unlikely to have a detrimental impact. The planning board was supportive of the proposal and found the. The planning board was supportive of the proposal and found the design to be simple uh, and unlikely to have a adverse impact to the neighborhood. Therefore, the planning board recommends approval of the site plan by Michael P. Clancy, PLS, dated September twelfth, twenty twenty four, and the architectural plans by Alan Christ, Architect, uh, LLC, dated October fourth, twenty twenty four, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans and elevations stamped and signed by a registered architect in a final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. And two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit for review and approval the site plan, floor plan, and elevations displaying the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning in evidence the board of appeals decision was obtained from the town clerk's office by the applicant or representative and recorded at the registry of deeds.
Uh, thank you. And uh, the building department report?
The building department has no objection to the request to relieve. Should the board grant the request to relieve, the building department will work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw. This board's decision and all applicable codes.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, barring any other questions from members of the board, uh, I think we will now move to deliberations. Uh, Jesse, do you mind starting this time around?
Sure. So I think it meets the requirements under forty eight, section six, as interpreted by case law. I see nothing that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think they've evidenced the fact that this um, is rear-facing, is relatively modest. They've shown us that elevation. We have the packet of materials. It's consistent with this structure. I don't believe it's inconsistent with the neighborhood. Um, in any event, I, I see nothing here that would render this substantially more detrimental than the current non-conformities. Um, I think it meets the requirements under section nine point oh five for the reasons stated, and therefore I would be in favor of granting the requested relief.
Thank you. Wadner?
I agree with my colleague, and I have nothing to add further.
Uh, thank you, Wadner. Um, I agree with you both too. Um, I'm just going to add, uh, the, the kind of thing I usually say when I, when a, a, a modest project like this comes across uh, our desk. Um, modest is one of my, one of my favorite adjectives, and I, you know, I'm, I, I, it, it is, it is, it often applies to uh, building projects in, in dense neighborhoods uh, like this. Uh, again, right near where I live, I'm very familiar with Cameron Street and with um, some of the other dense streets, increasing four and five. And have lived here for long enough to have seen the, the steady and, you know, sometimes slow, but improvement of this whole neighborhood, you know, building by building. Um, it's getting denser. Um, they, the buildings are getting renewed. Some new ones are, are sliding in, and uh, whenever it is that the Davis Path Footbridge is reconstructed and reopened so that uh, you can conveniently get over the tracks and into the village and to Town Hall, and all that sort of thing. It's uh, it, well, it's just all going to be great from, from there. But uh, back to the question of relief, uh, again, I agree with, with my colleagues, uh, in favor of relief, uh, as we all are, and that is a unanimous um, uh, grant of relief, subject to the conditions that have been read into the record. Um, thanks, everybody, and um, good luck with your project. And actually, you'll stick around for the next, for continuation? I think you.
I will.
All right.
Bob decided you needed a break from him, so.
Oh, well, is that, is that the bonus, though, that we're getting later, is that we, we will see him?
No, 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 I'm, I'm covering everything tonight.
Oh, everything.
He's at planning board.
You, you, please tell him, please tell him from me that we, we're, we're always pleased to see him, and there's, there's, he, he always brings something, something new and worth the, worth talking about.
Okay, I won't, I won't take offense to that.
No, not at all. No, it's uh, always, always uh, happy to see you as well, of course. Um, so uh, Six York Terrace, do you, have you and Nicole uh, chatted about this? You have a, you have a date out there, and tell us why.
So um, again, Ashley Duval, planner, three hundred Washington Street, Brookline Village. Uh, we're requesting to continue this hearing to a date certain. The team has decided that they want to make some changes to the plan, so we just needed more time to get those changes in the package and submitted to the board. I, I think Nicole said February thirteenth um, would work at seven o'clock, which.
Yes, that's correct.
But you're coming back, you're not going back to the planning board, right?
No, no, we're not going back to the planning board. We just didn't have time to make the changes we needed to get the board tonight. Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see. Um, Nicole, do we have to do a roll call vote for that continuance? Is that how we do that?
Usually, I think.
I think so, okay. Um, uh, on, on the motion to continue, uh, Six York Terrace, case number twenty twenty four dash zero 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 five seven to February thirteenth, twenty twenty five at seven PM. Uh, members, when I call your name, uh, your vote, please. Jesse Geller?
I'm in favor of the continuance, but have a question for um, Nicole.
Yes.
Or, actually, it's not a question, it's a suggestion.
Okay.
I think whenever this does actually come up, which I guess will be February thirteenth, I think you probably want to add something about use.
Okay.
Okay. What makes it illegal use?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, and Wadner, on the motion?
I, I am also in favor of the continuance.
Thank you, and I'll vote aye, and it's unanimous, and uh, you were continued to February thirteenth.
Great, thank you all so much.
See you or Bob on the, on the thirteenth. Uh, Nicole, anything else for us tonight?
No, concludes it.
All right, uh, uh, the chair is going to make a motion to adjourn. Uh, Jesse?
Seconded. Nicely done, Randall.
Seconded, thank you. And, and your vote? Oh, is it a second to vote, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I learned something tonight. Wadner?
Yes.
Yes, and the chair votes yes, or maybe I did when I made the motion, so uh, we are, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night at seven thirty seven.
Take care, take you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.